All right, welcome everyone. It's one after six, so we're gonna go ahead and start. And I would like to ask Chuck Moreno to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you Chuck. All right, Harmony, if we can do verification of quorum.
Yes, Director Alex Cook.
Here.
Director Van Lee.
Here.
Director Doherty.
Here.
Director Tim Cook is absent. President Griffiths.
Here.
For President, one absent, four met.
And Tim extends his apologies. He had a family emergency and yeah, if we can keep him and his family in your prayers, that'd be great. So with that, we're gonna go on to the approval of minutes. So is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Thank you, and then public comments. I see Darcy's here. Hello, Darcy Burke.
Hello, President Griffiths, board members, staff, residents. So I have good news today and I have bad news today. I know, I'm gonna try to do a sandwich and put the bad in the middle. First, I just wanna say the drought is over. Despite what your governor says, let me just tell you, when you have over 300% of snowpack, it's over. The governor, however, has not lifted his emergency declaration. So what that means for us as a retail water agency, a public retail water agency, is if we go out of his parameters, we pay heavy fines. I mean, I'm trying to be patient, I'm not really good at that, because it just is ridiculous. We all know we're out of a drought. I'm not saying we're not gonna have water management issues. We all know we need storage, but we're out of a drought and I just think it's not really fair to Californians to continue to use that word. I always ask people to be efficient, don't waste it, just use what you need, maybe save for a sunny day, but the drought is truly over. With the record snowpack and precipitation, I had spoken to Director Cook before the meeting started, but I wanna kinda give you an example of how much water is moving right now. If any of you are familiar with Folsom Lake in Sacramento, it's not a huge lake, but it's very important to the state water and Central Valley water projects. In one hour yesterday, 787 million gallons went out the dam to the ocean. That's enough water for over 7,200 people or families for a year. So that's, we have like 4,800 homes here, so it's like one and a half times a year for Canyon Lake. And if it has not alerted us to we need to build more storage, I don't know what has. We asked for rain, we got it, but we have no place to put it, or at least very few places to put it. So they're filling Diamond Valley Lake. Canyon Lake is full, obviously, by rain, but we're really petitioning Metropolitan Water District of Southern California to make what we used to call the replenishment water rate available. So if you normally pay $1,200 an acre foot, doesn't matter what an acre foot really is, let's just say it's a unit, Met would sell this water for $400 an acre foot. So for us, we would put it in our groundwater. We would put it, as Canyon Lake evaporated, we would move more water into Canyon Lake. But I would much rather have that water local, so that we can pull it out when we need it, rather than just see it go underneath the Golden Gate Bridge. But the reality is, the state's infrastructure is far inferior for the amount of water we now have. And you're gonna see more flooding in the Central Valley. They were supposed to have a reservoir called Temperance Flats that was never built, and Sights Reservoir, which is off of the Delta but north of the Sacramento area. That's been in process since 1960. And we still don't have it. So there needs to be some movement, I think some pressure on our legislature to spend the money on the propositions we have passed. There's also a bill from Senator Abbott Caballero that is gonna hold the state accountable to build those projects the governor outlined in his water plan, build more storage, and pay for it through a percentage of the general fund, just like we do education. So you don't have these propositions all the time, and that we know how we're gonna fund these long-term projects, which I think is really important. My division is growing in inefficient and excessive use. So we were at 28%, we're now at like 31% of my division is inefficient or excessive. And I know when we have really hot days, we've had some really hot days, everybody turns the sprinklers on, I totally get it. Just look at your water bill and look at your budget. You might have a leak you don't even know about and you're paying for. 45% of my service area now is on auto pay. Less than 1% opens their bill. So just pay attention. I know our CFO probably loves that nobody looks and just pays, but I don't. I would much rather have a conversation and find ways to help you save if you wanted to, or just to be more efficient. Now for the really bad news. So I have been telling you how our chemical costs have gone up like 300% each month for the last two months. We passed a water rate structure two years ago that included a 4.5% rate increase for this year. That's already passed, it's already done. In addition, the state allows us to pass through increases on utilities. So our energy, so that's gas and electric, with a cap at 5%. So on July 1st, your water bill's gonna go up about 9.5%. However, we're very much aware of those individuals that are on fixed income, that are seniors, that are struggling. We are one of the only water districts in California that have a rate assistance program. So you don't have to qualify through us, you might qualify through Southern California Edison or have a hardship, and we will give you pretty much $30 a month to offset your water bill. And as our rates go up, so does that program. So it's not a fixed number, it goes with it. We've also asked our staff and our rate consultant to explore different ways to structure our rates. We are very limited within Proposition 218 guidelines of how we can do it, but we've noticed some other agencies have been able to move some fixed costs to either property taxes or other venues that really benefit the property owner and not necessarily the customer. So for those areas that might benefit from that, we're exploring it. Nothing's been determined. However, we understand that we're only 30% built out and that we have families that are struggling to pay the bills. You know, our POA dues go up, our water bills go up, our Edison bills are going through the roof, and we're trying to make sure we have some money to offset that and still provide safe, clean, reliable water. I wanted to also mention, let's see. We're still working on our budget. We've been working on our budget since December. The five of us don't always agree. So the conversations have become more robust, but what we committed to do is to work together to come to some resolution, which means we may not have a budget by the end of June, we may not have it to July. So we're trying to meet the needs of all of our constituents, not taking one side or the other, but really coming to a collaborative effort to work together. And with this board, I can say it's actually been a refreshing experience, so that we've all had our wants and needs on the table and we can discuss them one at a time. I wanted to thank those that reached out today on social media to mention a sewer smell on Continental, everybody's favorite, I'm sure, especially as it gets hotter. But there are actually things we can do. There are special filters they put over manhole covers and other things, so I believe our crew responded and was hopefully able to address it. You can always call me directly, or if you tag me on Facebook, I can expedite that, 'cause nobody wants to smell that, and I totally understand. That's never a good situation. The state currently has four water right bills in play. Why that's important is that they're actually looking at taking people's water rights, which are property rights, and redistribute it either to the state or to others based on ethnicity. So it's a really scary precedent, because if they can take water rights, they can take your property too. It's a precedent. One is, there's really no difference, whether you own your home or you own water rights, it's all property. You pay taxes on water rights, just like you do a property tax, and you have to register. So we're watching those bills really closely. I want, I know this is late, because I wasn't here last month, but I wanted to thank Laura Flores and her team for an amazing job she did with the chairman of Metropolitan who came and had a reception here. He was blown away, not only by the beauty, but by the service. So thank you, if you can extend that to her, I'd appreciate it. When I was in Washington DC, I was able to meet with Congressman Calvert, and we were included with an appropriation on our behalf for almost $9 million for PFOS remediation. This particular appropriation is different than the one we received for Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant. This is for groundwater. So if anybody's familiar on the 15, that lake up the 15 near Temecue was a fishing lake. You saw biggest trout or bass, whatever, that's actually Lee Lake. It's owned by the Water District, and we use it to capture water and move water underground when we need to. That dam has been condemned, so we're working for money for that. That's why you don't see any fishing there now, that's why you see the lake really low, we have to keep it low. But the wells adjacent to that have high levels of PFOS, and so that's what the congressman has been able to allocate for us in a direct budget line. The Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant is 90% designed. So once it's 100%, then we'll go to costing, and we will figure out how much it's gonna cost and then go through the typical bidding process and hopefully award that. You're probably looking for at least two or three more years before that turns on. And then finally, the coffee with the mayor will be next Wednesday, right before city council meeting. It's at 7:30 at the Country Club. All are welcome. If you have questions or concerns for the city or the Water District, we're happy to answer them. And that's all I have, I'll be happy to take any questions.
I just, I have one question. I just wanna make sure, the rates are gonna go up 9.5%? And that's, I'm sorry, I didn't write that, is it June or July?
July 1st.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you so much for coming here and all your information, and the good news. Thank you for the good news.
Oh, the good news.
It's nice to have some good news. All right, thank you. Any other public officials? All right, we're gonna go on to presentations. Is that Eric? Standby. So if you ever have neck surgery and you have to wear a neck brace, you should not go skiing. That is, and I do that right for the presentation.
tirelessly on committees and clubs and goes, spends all day in ACC every single Thursday. And we got another president, Mike Harris, who spends all day in ACC. These guys spend all day on Thursday in ACC. I think this is a thankless job, that's really a thankless job. And anyway, I wish Tim was here, but he's been a joy to work with and we can give this to him for our appreciation of his service. The new guy. So we've known Alex around the POA for, basically since I've been here. He's been on committees, I think since he was born. And REC and FTC and Little League and raised his family here and really a part of the fabric of this community. And he was appointed, I think, seven or eight months ago to serve on the board, and he fit right in and has joined the circus here. And we really appreciated having him and thank you for your service. Good boy, good old boy. Whatever.
All right, thank you so much.
So before you get going, I just wanna say really thank you to, I guess the next time we'll see each other after this meeting is on the 11th, at the election. But I would like to thank this entire board, I wish Tim was here. You guys have been a joy to work with and this is absolutely a thankless job, and especially this year. So really thank you for your service and we've all appreciated working with all of you. Thank you.
It's kinda funny, the one thing I always say, it's like I would never work here, but I would volunteer here all, I don't know why, but I'll do it for free, but I wouldn't do it for money. So, that's interesting. We have a couple announcements I wanna go ahead and make, just to keep everyone in the loop. I'll start with the patio remodel, that is phase one. Phase one, we're expecting to be finished. Part of it for yesterday, the stage, maybe not the trellis, but everything should be done by the end of June. And with that, some of the good things, and you may not have seen on the plan designs, but if you take a look at it, it's quite fascinating. The single door, when you come up the steps, there's always just been one door. And most people, when coming around, would go through the front to get to the bar if they wanna have a cocktail while they're enjoying themselves on the beach. Part of the design is opening that to double doors, number one, and also expanding, having an outdoor bar window. So it's gonna be a lot larger, there's gonna be 10 taps there, so that'll be set up for members to come in and whether they're enjoying the patio or they wanna come up and have a cocktail or just order a soda, they can go ahead and do that. So we're excited about that coming near completion. The other thing, and this is what I'm very excited about, is one of the things that's been in the works, and Laura, and appreciate your comments on that, Darcy, because she's done a tremendous job, not just with banquet, but hiring excellent staff and building up our staff. So when phase one is complete, the lodge will be open seven days a week. And we're excited about that. We're gonna be open for lunchtime all seven days a week. The hours will be released as we get closer. But I'm very excited about the expansion of that. Also, service to the beaches, the pool and also the docks is gonna be expanded to seven days a week as well. And then the service hours, I'll let that, once it's all done, but there'll be certain service hours for that. You know, and I'll just, last on that little note, people continue to ask if we can keep it open later, and there's gonna be some adjustments, but I just want everyone to know, when they get upset or people get frustrated, why don't we stay open till 10 or 11 o'clock at night? And we have found, and if you saw on recent social media, in the last couple of weeks, later it's open. Unfortunately, there's some bad incidents that happen, and it happens inside the gate, which results in staff potentially being harmed or actually being harmed. So when we look at that for expanded hours during summer, we're also looking at having community patrol and on some nights even RSO here, just to make sure our staff and the members who don't wanna, you know, shouldn't have to deal with that are taken care of. So we are looking into that as well. The other update, and I think it's important for everyone to know as well, is we did send back, we did receive the purchase agreement from the city, and we reviewed it and we sent a revised one back to the city at the beginning of April, after our last board meeting. We have not received anything back from the city. So it'll be next board, the next fiscal board or next year's board, that will making, pretty much, I wanna say, almost starting from scratch, but we'll be taking care of all decisions in relation to the sale of the fire station with the city. So again, we have not received anything back from the city, it's on their lap. We'll see what happens, but it'll be next year's board that will be making decisions on everything relating to that. So with that announcements, it's time for member comments. Harmony, do we have any member comments?
No.
I'm just double checking, okay. So we're gonna go on. Consent agenda, is there anything that, anyone would like to have polled, any board member would like to have polled? And if the answer's no, do I hear a motion?
I saw motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent, motion carried.
All right, we'll go right on to board action items. And this is Steve Schneider. And Tim Cook was gonna be here, but Steve's gonna do this for us, thank you.
Good evening. So this is CAP funding for the Senior Center Backup Generator. It was requested by the POA to place a backup generator at the Senior Center. This request was to accommodate our senior members in periods of emergency, especially during the hotter months, when rolling blackouts could happen more frequently. This will provide the Senior Center as a cooling center if a member needs relief from the hot weather. Received three bids, is recommended the Board of Directors approve $22,200 from the CAP Fund 05670 for a backup generator at the Senior Center.
Thank you, Steve, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any member comments?
Yeah, Steve, I don't know what the other three bids were, and also curious, just 'cause it's background, but what size generator will be able to run air conditioning, everything there? Or will be limited to what it could run?
I believe it's a 27,000 watt unit and is sized to run the facility at full function, correct? Did answer your, all your questions, sorry.
Yeah, for sure, I just didn't wanna make sure it was under KWs or anything like that, make sure it's able to run everything from air conditioning, heating. Yeah, some back.
There's, there is a backup generator that's currently there, and it's a small, it's a small generator, and it would not be able to run the facility at anywhere near full capacity.
Any other board discussion? So I'm gonna make one comment on this, and I wish Tim Cook was here tonight. This is his baby. This is something that he has been talking about and working with Steve on getting at the Senior Center. His heart for, not just the seniors, but anyone who's going to need reprieve if there is a rolling blackout, anyone who, and just keep that in your mind when you're thinking of your neighbors and rolling blackouts happen, or if someone who has medication that requires to be refrigerated, and it's gonna be a while that blackout, this is a place where you can go. So please spread the word if the board votes to approve it. So thank you, Tim Cook, for this. Any more board discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent, motion carried.
All right, appeals committee member appointment. Andrea.
Actually, my resident, I'm gonna present. Being a couple people today, hello, good evening. I just also wanted to tell all the board members, thank you for your service. I didn't really get a chance to talk, Tim did not hear us. So, Tim, we wanna tell you, thank you. I got a text that you are listening, so we just all wanna extend our gratitude to the board, to all the volunteers and the community members, so thank you, everybody. Okay, so the appeals committee appointment, another volunteer. Thank you to all our volunteers. Background, the appeals committee has an opening for an alternate member. Ryan Clark resigned as the alternate member in February. The committee interviewed multiple candidates to fill the position and voted on appointing Terry Jarvis. So it's recommended that the Board of Directors approve to appoint Terry Jarvis as the alternate member contingent upon execution of a confidentiality agreement effective immediately.
Thank you, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion. Or a second?
I'll let Harmony decide who is first and second, that was kind of a tie. All right, any comments from the members? Board discussion?
I just have one question, I see the application and it certainly looks great. Is there any additional background on Terry Jarvis in terms of what his background might be? Or skill set, or is he in the legal field, or sales, or just, does anyone know? No, okay, well then.
Andrea is gonna speak to it, since she's. Thank you.
So Terry Jarvis came to the appeals committee on the 24th of April. The committee interviewed him and other candidates. He seemed to have a lot of background with the committee, with the city. He seemed like he had applied a while back regarding, you know, and thought maybe getting more involved in the community would be a good thing. He spent about a year doing that and he felt like now he was ready to take on this appeals.
Thank you.
Any other board questions, comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent, motion carried.
All right, next, we're, is it gonna be Lynn or is it Carrie? Or 8.3?
Yes, okay, so a little background on this board action item, and I think I need to clarify it once I go through it. So the background on this is the board approved, I'm sorry, in October, the board approved the 2023 Water Sports Calendar Request and Rules Variance Request for this current calendar year. The rules variance is required to host the event, so that's why we do them in conjunction with each other. In November, the board approved a modification to the calendar variance, I'm sorry, the calendar rules variance request. We had to add an additional rule that was left off. Currently, in the last couple months, I'm sorry, since the last, this first event last two weeks ago, I believe, the ski clubs have submitted a request to modify the annual calendar request. Staff modified the lake use policy to coincide with that request. So the clubs themselves were requesting to use the North Ski area at 6:00 PM rather than 2:00 PM as previously adopted. When the board approved the North Ski and Jump Lake policy, the policy was set at 2:00 PM for the events to end. But the clubs themselves, for this year's events, are requesting a variance to extend their events to 6:00 PM. And then we left all the prior rules variances that had previously been approved as just part of the action item. So we did include an updated calendar and then the policy just for reference, but we did make a recommendation to staff to change the policy to 6:00. Since both clubs were requesting it, we thought, okay, if we're going to make the variance, do we wanna adopt a policy revision? So that's why this was all submitted that way. The two clubs, though, did contact the POA and wanted to clarify, they weren't asking for the policy to be updated, they were requesting a variance exception for their event specifically for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, do I hear a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, are there any comments from the members?
Excuse me, President Griffiths, can I clarify the motion here? It says approve and reject, so is this a motion to approve? Oh.
Motion to discuss.
Okay.
All right, member comments? Anyone? All right, board comments?
So I have one, just a little background, I know we did this just in October, and when we put these in place, it was to allow the clubs to go from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Because in the past, we only. Um, because, um, in the past, we only allowed one event per month for any club. Um, and so the reason we made it a seven to two is because now we are allowing two events per month. Um, and these are off, not in the, uh, June, July, August timeframe. So it's the non-core summer hours. And so the reason for the seven to two is because two weekends, basically in April and, and September, October, we're, we're going to block it. Not just from, from the other, either whether it's a wakeboard club that has the reservation or the ski club that has the reservation. We're going to block it from all other members that may want to use the lake. And so the reason we made it seven to two at that time was to allow other hours for other members to use the ski lake. So that was the basis for it. What I'm, I guess the question I've got, uh, the thing I'm probably struggling with in moving, in order to move it seven to six is I like the fact that our clubs have, our wakeboard and ski clubs have gotten together and are working together, uh, for a proposal. So I commend them for, for trying to do that and to come up with a mutually agreeable, uh, solution. I still have concerns if we take it from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, it, it locks out all other residents. For basically two weekends a month, uh, in those core months. And so, so I'd like to, I, I would be more comfortable if we were to, uh, compromise on it instead of maybe two o'clock, maybe it, maybe make it, uh, a shorter on it, uh, longer for, for the clubs, but still allow some time for other, other members and residents to use the facility.
You have a time that comes to mind?
I think a compromise instead of seven to, uh, six, say seven to four, because right now it's seven to two, so let's split the difference and say seven to four would be a thought.
All right. Any other board comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with Bill. I, I don't think locking out any amenity, um, for a full weekend from the regular members is what we want to do. We want to make sure that if somebody does want to make a water ski run in the afternoon or a wakeboard run in that afternoon, that they still have the ability to do that. So I think that seven to four is very appropriate.
Any other comments? So is there another motion?
So, please correct me on the proper procedure for this. If I, I would like to make an amended.
A subsidiary.
A subsidiary motion to just modify the, the, the time to reserve it from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM and make it uh, not just for this one event, but for all, both the ski club or the water ski club, or this, or the water, the wakeboard club to be able to have that same event. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the policy change goes to 4:00 PM.
Policy change would be seven to 4:00 PM.
Second.
All right. Are there any member comments on the subsidiary motion? Nope. Any board comments on that? All right. So we have a motion to change the policy for the wakeboard club and the ski club. Any other, all club functions to end at 4:00 PM? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
More in favor. One absent, motion carried.
All right. Uh, next is Amanda. She's walking out.
This is a 28 day reading to revise rule GR point five, point six, point D, point one. Proof of insurance required for golf carts. In fiscal year 2223, the association moved to permanent golf cart decals. Prior to permanent registration, members were required to visit our member services office annually to provide up-to-date documentation and receive a new decal. Members should still provide current proof of insurance to register their carts and to maintain registration. Staff wants to match the insurance requirement currently in place for boat registration, which results in a fine added to a member's account if a policy is allowed to lapse or is canceled. Additionally, the RFID transponder would also be deactivated. Members would be notified prior to these actions taking place. Finally, at last month's board meeting, it was proposed that staff research liability coverage and additional insured requirements for golf cart insurance policies. After reviewing prior association history and researching best practices for HOAs, staff agreed and determined that the additional requirements will help better protect the POA and its members. So we are proposing that the new rule read that a valid certificate of liability coverage must be submitted at the time of registration, which identifies the following. The certificate must name the CLPOA member as policy holder, effective dates of the policy, a policy number, a description of the vehicle, minimum 300,000 liability coverage, and the CLPOA named as additional insured with our address. If the policy becomes canceled or expired, the member shall provide the CLPOA proof of valid insurance prior to a lapse in coverage. Failure to comply may result in a fine or revocation of privileges and that fine would be a hundred dollars. So essentially we are matching exactly what's required for our boat insurance at the moment. For golf carts, the biggest impact is that we're now requiring members have 300,000 liability, which previously we required no amount. We, we didn't look at that. And we're also requiring that the association be listed as additional insured, which we also did not require previously.
Thank you, Amanda. And is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve, motion to discuss.
Approved.
All right. Do I hear a second? I'll second that so we can discuss it too. And, um, member comments first? All right. Board comments?
So you answered one question. It was why the 300,000. So that's good. That's the same as the boats. Um, how difficult, difficult will, is this going to be for members to, to get this done if we haven't? I mean, go through the normal registration process and then I know we, if we haven't had it before, we're going to have to contact our, our insurance, uh, company. Make sure we have the correct amount, which I'm fine with. Um, but to get the, the right language on, on having the co-insurance and so forth, that's been, that's been difficult, I know, for some members. We've had to go around a number of times on some of these with, with boats or otherwise. I guess the concern or question I've got is, is, is what about the difficulty to the members to con, uh, conform with this new ruling?
That was definitely considered. Um, I think the biggest impact is right now, we have a lot of members who currently use their homeowners insurance policies to cover their golf carts. Um, which ideally might not be very effective if there were to be some type of accident within the community because the cart is not at your home during that time. Um, these requirements are likely going to, um, require members to get an actual vehicle or off-road policy for their cart. Um, as far as difficulty goes, I mean, I think it's a, a phone call to your agent, but in this case, we're weighing some minor inconveniences to the members and overall protection for all members in the POA. Um, if we don't have these requirements and something does happen, we'd be required to only rely on the overall POA insurance, which would affect every member.
Uh, Bill, maybe this will help you answer, um, help me answer your question. When this was tabled a couple of months ago, um, I actually went and visited with staff and I actually tried to get them to streamline this rule just a little bit to make it easier for, uh, the members and their insurance agents or brokers, uh, and on staff to keep track of all this stuff. And in particular, to try and get them to consider, try to get staff to consider waiving the additional insured requirement, which I thought was a reasonable idea, uh, but not necessarily necessary. Uh, staff considered it and they came back with this proposal to maintain the additional insured requirement. And it's a conservative decision that I, uh, have no problem with. And it, uh, just, it adds a little extra layer of protection for the POA. So unless it proves to be a huge problem, which I don't think it will, because basically what you do is you cut this out. You put it in your email, you send it to your agent and a couple of days later, that's, this document should appear, uh, e, either in your mail or they send it straight to the POA. So I don't think this is going to be a problem. And even though I tried to amend it just a bit, I am for it in its current form.
Will this eliminate the ability for somebody to put it under their homeowner's insurance and they'll have to have it as an auto insurance? Okay. It's a special homeowner's, but it, but can you still put this under your homeowner's insurance?
Yes, you can put it under your homeowner's insurance in some cases, depending on how your carrier, uh, treats it. They may treat it as a separate policy, as a piece of, it's what's called, um, mobile equipment, like a tractor. Uh, or they may just have, have the ability to put it right into your homeowner's. It just depends. But it should not be a problem. And it's not, I, maybe I didn't have my bike on. These are not automobiles. That, let me make that clear. They're, they're, like I said, because they're called mobile equipment, like a tractor or a, uh, some other thing that's not licensed for the street. Even though ours are used on the street, that's, we're, we're a little bit different than most places.
I know mine, for mine, I have a separate policy and for, it shows up, although it lists my golf cart, it shows up as a motorcycle because they weren't sure how to properly code it, but it shows on that. I'm not sure about, I am concerned about the additional insured. I understand it adds a layer of protection for the POA. I just want to make certain that it's something. And this is just a 28 day read, so it gives us that time to go ahead and do that investigation. Cause I want to find out how difficult it is or if it's going to cost me more money and how much of that to name the POA as an additional insured, because I want to keep that in mind as well, whether or not we need to have that. So, that, that's my thoughts on that.
It shouldn't cost you any more money. I know this is being done as a risk to reduce the risks to the POA, which I certainly understand. How many incidents have we had where it has resulted in, in some damage or, or liability to the POA in the past?
Well, I don't know about directly to the POA, but there have been multiple deaths on golf cart crashes here in the, probably the last 10 years. I think the POA is probably lucky that that didn't result in a liability for us.
Yeah. And I, I know someone where, uh, the individual is driving and she was a passenger and he had a parked car and she was ejected. And she's still going through extensive rehabilitation. So that does happen. Um, so to require members to at least have a minimum, I think is helpful because otherwise it just falls on the person who was unfortunately injured and possibly no fault of their own. Any more thoughts? All right. With that, um, we're going to call to see, okay, here we go. We have a 28 day re, reading. So all in favor of approving, I should try to do this with my glasses. These are approving the proof of insurance required on golf carts, uh, 28 day reads. Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
More in favor. One absent, motion carried.
And again, this is a 28 day reading. This is a great time for members' feedback. You can email the board. You can email board directors individually, contact your insurance companies. Let us know what struggles that you might be running into. But this is a time for us to hear back from you as well. Are we done? Oh my goodness. We are on to association reports. Eric, are you ready for that? Cause that moved pretty quickly.
Hey, thank you all for coming. Uh, I'll run through a few, some project updates. Uh, our year two road project, uh, we published this, where there's a map out on our social media showing, uh, what, I don't know if we have it, but, you probably don't have it to put up, but, uh, the bids for that project are due in on May 19th. Uh, this year's engineer's estimate range from six and a half million to seven and a half million dollars, depending on which road strategy we use. Um, the current balance in our road reserve fund is eight million, 764,000. We will also be contributing another 2,019,008. So, um, this year, um, that fund will have 10,783,000 dollars, um, going in and out of it. Um, and we expect those bids to fall probably somewhere in that engineer's estimate, seven, seven and a half million dollars. Um, will, uh, the bid results will be made public. Um, it will probably may go to the next month's board meeting. Uh, we'll just have to see how much negotiation and, um, how much due diligence we have to do with the bidders and analyzing the various strategy, two strategy options. So that's a big project that's coming. And, um, a good example of why, um, various boards, since I've been here, have been putting in $2 million a year into the road reserve fund. It's our largest asset and our largest maintenance liability. So, um, we, I think the current estimates are in 2031. We should be all caught up and have, you know, fair to good condition roads throughout the association. That's right, right Renee? 2030, 3031. I just saw you write that down somewhere. So, uh, so that's exciting, uh, be another big project. This year's project is going to be kind of in the, um, the Galt Field, Harilson Park, that, uh, Appaloosa, that kind of corner of the neighborhood. And then we'll also be going back and seal coating, which is essentially putting a sunblock on all the new roads that we did last year. And that helps them last longer. And that'll probably be the process that will go about, um, for the, every year from now on. Um, obviously they'll be smaller. There'll probably be two and a half, $3 million bite sizes, um, in the coming next four or five years. Excuse me. The lodge project, uh, weather permitting, uh, we expect to have the bandstand poured. Uh, if you look out here on the, um, renderings, you'll see there's a, a raised stage. Uh, it's for a wedding venue and bandstand. We usually rent a stage and a dance floor for Fiesta Day and part of this design was to have a permanent one that served for weddings and bands on Fiesta Day. Uh, right now we're shooting to have that stage poured for Fiesta Day. We also have a wedding coming the week before. Uh, plan B, depending on weather, uh, weather kind of killed us the last month and we lost a lot of time on the retaining walls. But we're trying to make that up now. And, uh, one way or the other, we're going to accommodate as much of Fiesta Day as we can on the lawn and the wedding area here. Uh, the, the medians on Canyon Lake Drive South, uh, are wrapping up. And next week we should be starting the smaller medians between the main gate and Railroad Canyon Road that are currently mostly bare. And our goal is to flip the switch and turn the nighttime up lighting on before Fiesta Day. And I think, um, a lot of the criticisms we've heard will probably go away the first time people see it at night. It's going to be beautiful. So we're looking forward to that. A solar project. Uh, we're looking forward to final connections here at the lodge. And Equestrian Center Country Club is, um, currently underway. Much easier digging over there, as you can imagine. Um, and, um, right now we're working on designs for what the golf course and the driving range layout is going to look like underneath the structure. It'll be in the forward part of the structure, uh, may have some pavers, may have some concrete. There's going to be hitting mats, uh, nighttime lighting. So we're excited about the potential that that area is going to have. And then, uh, solar, the other thing for solar is we're looking forward to, uh, probably connecting all of the solar project towards the end of this month, maybe a little bit into next month. Uh, English Beat Concert this weekend. I think it's sold out. And Fiesta Hopper coming up at the end of this month and we're excited for that. And thank you again to this board.
All right. Thank you, Eric. One thing I want to add to you about the lodge and the reconfiguration of the bar is all the tap lines are going to be going downstairs. So right now, if all of a sudden the, the keg ran empty, a server would have to go downstairs and bring up a new pony keg, put it in. And then that takes time and also risk of injury. Same with the soda, the soda syrup. Those boxes are very heavy and they'd have to do the same thing. So now we're going to have lines that go directly downstairs where the kegs will be. Um, so that'll improve not only efficiency, but my bigger concern is always making sure staff is safe and reduce the risk of injury to our staff. So I'm, I'm really excited about that.
Thank you for reminding me about that. Um, that reminds me about this. Um, I wanted to mention, and I forgot, um, our, our ACE communications staff and Lynn have been working and Laura have been working very hard on a wedding and banquet package that's about ready for. on a wedding and banquet package that's about ready for prime time. We're still discussing new fees with our new amenity for outside weddings. We've been charging way, way under market price for our wedding venues. And when this project is done, we're going to do, we're doing a lot of research and we're going to start charging whatever other venues charge for outside weddings. Of course, our members are going to get a deal, still the best deal anywhere around, but this, this will probably be available soon. And it's, we're basically looking at all of our banquets and all of our weddings. This is an amazing place to have a wedding and we're really going to start marketing this. So that's kind of part of the whole lodge project, so thank you.
Awesome. Now we're going to go on to board comments. And who wants to start? Bill?
So our, our security advisory committee meets. And one of the things that the committee's been doing, I'm representative on that as a liaison. And so they've been reviewing the data that is provided by our community patrol every month. And Amanda gave a great presentation using a lot of the software that Allied Universal does for us. That's going to be very helpful with this committee reviewing on a monthly basis to help us keep track of trends and areas where we should maybe have more coverage and things like that. And so we're seeing some real good progress there. I also, I know last month I spoke about some, we were seeing an increase in, in some vandalism activities. And April was a rough month. Beginning of April, we had spring break and we had a lot of activities. We had one, one of our residents was egged for five days in a row by kids that are roving band of kids with ski masks. There, there was a community patrol officer that was shot in the neck with a gel gun. And there was a a golf cart of teenagers that was driving down Canyon Lake Drive at the causeway that was, was accosted by the same group of teenagers and beat one of the kids up. And it was really, the first couple of weeks were really pretty rough. And that may be very concerned about, about the summer and seeing the uptick in it. The good news is, we had, we had some, both due to cameras and feedback from the community that the P O A did. Also with the fact that one of our residents, who's a member of our, of our camera program that we have forwarded some information to us that the combination of the two allowed us to identify it. That, when we, when that was all going on, I got on the phone with the mayor and asked the city if they could please step up and increase the patrols by the sheriff, which they did. And I'm happy to say that within a week, we were able to identify all six of the individuals. They are repeat offenders. They have all been, we are taking disciplinary action as a P O A and disciplinary action or actions being taken by the city as well. And so the good news is our system working, I think it's our first instance of our, of our community camera program working. And so I think today we've got 60 to 67 or 70 people enrolled. We want to encourage more residents to, to get enrolled in that, in that program. So thank you, thank you to everyone who helped with that. I'm also the liaison on the green and Tuesday work group committees. And I'm really glad and proud and excited that the T W G was, was selected as a grand marshal. So I think that is just a terrific decision by, by the committee that, that did that. That's, that's super. And just to spread word on that, they've done these divot days where you can go out on the golf course and help them fill in, sand the, walk the golf course and sand in the holes, or the divots rather. And they have another one coming up on May 8th. So if anyone needs a little exercise in the morning, please, please sign up and, and come on out. And I think 7:30 in the morning, the golf course, and we'll get you a little can to help fill it in. It's a good day with a bunch of great people. And then unfortunately, I will be away for the election that's coming up next week. My wife and I are taking a pilgrimage to the Holy Land. And so I want to thank my fellow directors for, for their service this year. And I know I will say a prayer for our community while I'm in Jerusalem the day of the election, so I wish you all the best.
Great.
One more thing, sorry. P S, speaking of that, there's a national day of prayer that is on May 4th, it's Thursday, right? This Thursday, and it's at the fire station. Encourage anyone who is, would like to help participate in that. It's a, it's a great event for our community.
Great.
So I too will not be able to make the meeting next week. So I wanted to say a few words about our three outgoing directors. Unfortunately, I was surprised and saddened by the fact that Tim couldn't be here tonight. So what I've decided to do is pass my comments on to him privately very soon. But Renee and Alex, both of you may or may not return next week to be on this board. We will soon see. Your desire to run again speaks volumes about your commitment and dedication to the betterment of our community. And I commend you for that. Thank you for your service and good luck in the election. To all three of you, including Tim, take it from one who knows, your first year on the board reinforces the concept of you don't know what you don't know. During my first year, I benefited from your coaching and mentorship, and so did the community. I personally thank you for the, for taking the time to do that for me. Again, I thank you, all three of you, for your service to our community. Thank you.
Alex, you're up.
Thank you, thank you Greg, that was, that was super nice. I want to give a little update. I sit monthly on the rules committee. And I will say it's one of the best well-run committees that I've been on in this community for a very, very long time. We, the goals and the conversation is really, really good. How they go about the process is actually incredible. Their, sorry, the committee itself is working on simplifying all our rules in a lot of different ways. There's over almost 200 pages of rules. I don't, we can't expect any new member moving here to sit there and read that every night so they know all the rules. So we're looking at ways to simplify the tier structure and try to take the redundancy out of the rules. So as you go forward over the, probably it's not going to be a quick overnight process, it might be a full year. But I'm super excited about it. I hope I get to see it, see it get finished. But on top of that, I just want to thank the community allowing me to volunteer on this board for the last seven, eight months. I was appointed in August. I've never been on the board before. I've sat in audience all these years and it's been truly rewarding to get to know, I mean, I didn't know Bill, I didn't know Greg, I barely knew Renee or Tim. I really didn't know much of any of these guys on the board. And it's been really rewarding working with them and working through the process. And so thank you guys, I really do appreciate it. On top of that, if anybody knows that's been sitting in this chair, knows the staff is absolutely amazing. Top to bottom, whether it's operations, ACC, corporate, I can go to the restaurants. I mean, had Paul and Laura kill it, and I'm super proud to be part of that structure and represent them and them represent me. So I thank you guys for everything. And next Thursday, the 11th, we hope we have quorum because nobody wants to go to Saturday just for the angst. I think we all want closure, whatever that might be, we want closure. So if you have not voted yet, please get your votes in. The numbers have jumped quite radically the last two days, so that's, it gets me optimistic that we are going to hit quorum. But if you have friends that haven't put their votes in, beat them over the head and get them on board. So thank you guys for everything. I really appreciate it and it's been an honor to sit up here for you guys.
Thank you, Alex. I have a lot of, I'm going to start with, if you haven't had a chance to go through and look at all the staff reports, please do so. They put a lot of work and time into them. And that's when you can see what's happening in our community, also what's coming up, which is more important with every single month being packed full of fun activities. Another option too is to go on to our calendar, under community calendar, also our events tab. Please subscribe to our website, follow us on Instagram, Facebook, all those great things. And of course, we have a newsletter that comes out weekly. We try everything that we can and we're only getting better to improve the communication. But there's a lot of ways for you to know what's going on in our community. Also in your packet, I believe, and if not, we can get this to you. But the financial statements are available. And you can go through and you can look at, and see how much is in each account, cash, investment. So I know there's been, just been concerns here and there, so I just want everyone to know, we look at all our accounts in total, just for, just for cash alone, there's a little bit over 7 million. Our investments, net of unrealized gain is 14 million and change. So overall, just from cash and investments, there's over 21,200,000 in our accounts. So I just want, and that's as of March 31, so I wanted to point that out. Now on to the fun stuff. I will tack on to the T W G, the divot day. There's also coffee and donuts, so if you're just thirsty and hungry, come on down. And then we'll give you some sand and you can help out with that. But free coffee and donuts, that's how we bribe you with a sugar high and caffeine high to get it going. I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve you as president. Any position on the board, it's a service job and we all, well, at least I think we all really enjoy it. I really love it. People ask me, where do I get my energy from? And I posted on Facebook, but I'll say it out loud, it is coffee, Black Rifle Coffee, but coffee and Jesus. And that's what keeps me going and I enjoy serving everyone here. I would like to thank the appeals committee. There's a lot of committees that run into challenges and I think appeals and ACC argue over who's the most hated committee. And, and they say that jokingly, but our appeals committee, it's a tough job. I mean, they are members just like everyone else and they love their neighbors, but sometimes their neighbors come in front of them. And a pill of citation, they make the absolute right decision, a thorough decision with everything that they do. It's not a quick judgment, it's thoughtful. They spend a lot of time in advance, reading everything that's coming in and then spend at least three to four hours that day, taking care of all the members who come in for their appeals. I'd also like to thank the senior work group. They are busier now more than ever. And with that, if you're ever bored on a weekday, probably just go down to the senior center and you'll find something fantastic to do. Also, their calendar is posted, so you can always look at future events, whether you want to play Mexican trained dominoes, poker, you're into quilting. There's always something that's going on down there. And the senior work group takes care of managing that facility. They even raise money and they spend their own time raising money just to make sure there's coffee cups for everyone at not even the members expense, but that's one of the things that they do. So it's a fantastic team that likes to keep it, keep it beautiful for the community. And now down the line, I'll start with Harmony. You are incredibly brilliant. I kind of think maybe you should go into getting a law degree. Because I think I know someone who might hire you, but thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow. And when I say that, for making sure that if it needs to be discussed in open session, you direct us there versus in executive. Thank you for helping us as we run all our board meetings. You are brilliant. Your memory and your knowledge of this community is fantastic because you've lived here forever. And you've been working here forever, so I just greatly appreciate you. Whoever's on this board is going to be incredibly lucky to have her assist, assist them, so thank you for that. Sean, you're not staff, but oh my goodness, you're fantastic. So thank you and to your fantastic team who protects the P O A in many more ways than anyone here will know unless you're on the boards and you get privy to a lot of stuff. So thank you for protecting us and protecting all our dollars for that. And then Lynn. What I love about Lynn is she is so soft spoken. But you're fierce in the most gentle way. I guess that's the best way to describe you. And again, your knowledge of the community is amazing. Of course, she's been here over 20 years, so why wouldn't it be? But you remember it all, which for someone at my age is always a surprise, even though you're a lot younger. So I just thank you for your dedication to the community. I thank you that the subsidy for the lodge alone has been reduced over 50% since 2017. And there's great things coming with you and Laura at the helm in making this restaurant and the great things that you and Paul have done, aside from all the other duties that you have. So thank you for being a sounding board to me, to anyone on the board who has gone in to speak with her. Again, you're just amazing. And then this guy here, Eric. Aside from you constantly getting injured, and yes, I had to bring that up again. You are the glue to the community, is how I see it. And I, I think this is going to sound so cheesy, but you know, not just, not just a, I think of the Hair Club for Men. You know, not just a member, but a client or something like that. And that's all that comes to my mind. I don't remember the commercial. But here's the thing, you live here, so you're more passionate about everything than I think any other general manager could be if they didn't live here. Because you look at it from a homeowner's perspective, not only just increasing the value of our homes collectively, but making certain that we get the best deal. What you did for the members who voted for Vacation Park and the pump track with only 2.2 million and the lowest bid was in the 2.6 range. And because of your background in construction and the knowledge that you have, you were able to do it just a tad bit under, which was a huge feat from my perspective. And then there's this, okay, well, I'm not dumb. I started on this line. I'm not going to give you all the credit. And then also for the lodge, I know the bids came in higher than what the board even offered to do this renovation, but I am excited, I'm excited that members can go and sit at the restaurant, not stick their fingers in the furniture because of the holes that are in there, just to say the least. But you're going to give us the most amazing view out here. And I'm excited to sit out there, whether it's with coffee or a cocktail, and just enjoy the spectacular view that we're going to have now. You two are an excellent sounding board. I love that I come to you with what I think is a good idea and then you give me a better idea. So I, I thank you for that. And then for the guidance that you've given all us board members throughout this time, so I'll just stop there. And then to Steve, the wind beneath his wings. And if I could sing, I know someone who can, but she only does it for Jesus. But you are absolutely fantastic. Not only do you run an amazing crew, not that you don't, but not only do you run an amazing crew who takes care of everything for us. And if you've been to any event here, or you've seen a wedding, or you've gone to Rocktoberfest, I'll use that one because the next day, everything is pristine. And that's because your crew is out there at night and in the morning, making certain that everything is beautiful for members to enjoy. And then your engineering background and your construction background, being able to take suggestions that we have to do. And instead of us having to hire someone to make the plans that you can do that for us, saving us, you know, 10, 20, $30,000 is spectacular. And I enjoy that, enjoy saving the members money. You're just fantastic. I don't know how else to say it. You really are. And whoever's going to be on the board next, you're going to learn that soon enough. And I greatly appreciate you, so I'll stop with there, all those charles right there, so. Okay, I'll go on, but I know someone needs to pack and we have some appeals that we have to go through. So with that, I just want to say thank you to everyone again. And if I missed your name, I apologize, but it's an incredible staff, 175 people, right? 175 people work here to make our enjoyment of this community the best possible. And I just want to thank you for that. So a round of applause to everyone who works here. With that, we are going to take a momentary break, 10 minutes, five minutes? 10 minute break, and then we're going to go move forward with our appeals. All right, thank you guys. 10 minute break and then we're going to go move forward with our appeals. All right. Thank you guys. Greg, Alex, ready to go? All right. Thank you everyone for your patience. You guys don't want to stay for this? You could stay. All right. Thought they wanted to pull, you know, being on the board thing. All right. We're going to go ahead and start with our architectural appeals and we'll turn it on over to Cheryl.
Yes, and I believe Mr. Brian Ross are here. Would you go ahead and come up to the podium up here? Oh, Marvin's first. I'm sorry. I don't have, my, my apologies. So Marvin, let's go ahead and have you come up first. My apologies. Okay. So for our first board appeal, it's Mr. Marvin Hall, who's appealing the ACC denial for an oversized dock. The member submitted an oversized dock plan on March 16th of 23 and the committee denied the application due to the size. The dock size should not exceed 28 feet. How the member uses the size is up to the member. The committee does recommend that it were a 22 foot by a 10 foot slip. In order to maintain the lake and the size of the dock built, the committee strives to keep the general design in PC 9.4 for all new docks and replacement docks. The current allowance for dock sizes were just revised and approved by the board in February of this year. However, the committee had already been maintaining this general design with only a few exceptions. Those exceptions were approved in the open main lake properties. There are always a desire for membership to get larger docks approved. However, in doing so, it would cause navigational issues in most cases. So with that being said, if we can go ahead and go to the exhibit one, which will show the actual dock and the location of the dock. And I'm going to go ahead and allow Mr. Hall for you to have a moment and explain what it is you would like to do. May I interrupt you for just a moment? It sounds to me like you have a new plan that you're not here for the plan that you were rejected for. You are, you want to submit a new plan. If that's the case, this is not the forum to do that. You would have to come back to the committee with that. I understand, but that's not what we're here for. The board did not have all the information that you have right now. And so it wouldn't even be able to be considered tonight. What's being considered is the dock that you were rejected for the last time you were with the committee.
Yeah. Sorry about that. You know, 48 inches wide to be turnaround for wheelchair accessibility. I have two grandmothers that are in wheelchairs and would be nice to be able to let them be able to use the boat and all that stuff while they're still living. So. And that's all in here too.
Okay. So once again, it sounds to me like there are some new situations that I think it would be best that you would come back to the committee for those things if that's what you're looking for.
Understood.
I'd like to request that you set up an appointment to come in and speak to us directly. Specifically about your ADA request. Okay. So we have a good understanding.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes. Where would I come in to see at the POA?
Correct. Come to the POA planning compliance section and anyone at the staff will be able to assist you and set you up with an appointment.
All right. And I'm apologizing for wasting guys' time.
And please do.
Not a waste at all. Appreciate you coming in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, is there something we need to do like table this harmony or how are we supposed to work with this?
It's up to the board if they'd like to deny it or table, but a motion would be nice.
Yeah, it's almost withdraws our motion.
I motioned to table it.
Second.
All right. All in favor of tabling say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Or in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Okay. So for our final one is going to be Brian Ross. He is appealing the ACC denial. It is a front entry patio cover that goes into the courtyard, actually which we call the, the front yard setback. Mr. Ross was Mr. Ross was approved for a new home back in December of 2018. Upon an inspection of the project, inspectors found that a portion of the front entryway patio cover is located within the 20-foot front yard setback. The inspector sent a notification stating that the project was not according to the approved plan, and a correction plan must be submitted to the ACC Committee. Mr. Ross submitted the application to the ACC Committee, and due to it being in the front entryway, and it's a CCNR violation, the committee had to deny the application. Member is currently appealing to the board to keep the front entry patio patio cover in the current position located in the front yard setback. On Scout Street, it has a nine-foot community setback. The front yard being 20-foot, adding the additional, and there is a correction here, it's supposed to say nine feet community setback, the post of the patio cover is required to be located 29 feet back from the curb. So at this current time, what the committee is basically asking for is that the staff and the committee is recommending that the Board of Directors uphold the ACC Committee's decision and deny the members' request to keep the front entryway patio cover post in the front yard. At this time, I would like to give just a moment to Dave, one of our committee members. They just went out there last week, and they explained exactly how far into the setback it is.
Last Thursday, I went out and actually measured again, just to make sure we weren't in error anyway. It was 24 feet 5 inches in the setback against the CCNR, and the surfaces appeared to be cracked on the vertical and the horizontal toward the left side, which is when you're standing at the curb pacing the home, the lower left corner wasn't even straight. So it's not aesthetically pleasing the way it was built. It's pretty much the bottom line.
Okay, so if we can go to exhibit one, it'll show the picture of the... It's kind of like a structure. We called it an arch in the beginning. It's the L-shaped arch, or the upside and down L-shaped arch, which is in the front yard right there. So that's the portion of which we're talking about. The reason why we're calling it a patio cover, and Mr. Ross, you can correct me if I'm wrong. You actually are putting a patio cover on top of that eventually, you would like to, correct?
No, what I'd like to do is put a front door, like a courtyard door, right there, and then a fence that would go across from that small post that you see on the left. So that would encapsulate that entire area. So when somebody came to visit, or deliver a package, or what may, they would ring the door there and then go down to where the front entry is.
Technically, it's a freestanding structure in that it is not connected to the home on the right side that you're seeing right there.
Yes.
There's probably a half-inch gap there.
Yeah, I'll cover that. I was actually told by one of your employees, who no longer works in the planning department, that as long as it was detached from the front of the house, they've allowed things to encroach up to five feet into this front yard setback. So that purposely was done detached because of that. Otherwise, I would have had it just attached to the garage.
I'm not sure who you're talking about. Unfortunately, the plan that you presented, which that's going to be exhibit two, three, and actually exhibit four would be the best one to look at, which is the front yard. It doesn't show, and so that's the reason why the committee would not approve something like that. Staff does not have the ability to be able to approve or deny anything. It's all going to be the committee itself.
Sure, I'm aware of that. I was just going there for another reason. I had mentioned what I was doing. She had drove by the house and thought it was something different, and I had expressed what I was going to do with my plan, but I wasn't sure what to do with that front entry, and that's when we discussed that. The site plan does actually show a 10-foot wall that was approved from the house all the way over to the property line, which I know that's not usually allowed, but it was approved. But instead of building that, we decided, once the house was done, to do something a little bit more architectural, and that's why I came up with that shape. And again, the only reason it protruded into the front yard setback is because I was told by someone that that was okay as long as it was detached. And then I went ahead and drove around through the community. I don't have a lot of time. I've got several houses I'm building right now. But I've noticed that, literally, just within five, 10 minutes of driving around through the neighborhoods, even just on my way back and forth, there's several, several, I mean, maybe even hundreds of houses in Canyon Lake that have front yard encroachments, whether it be retaining walls that are taller than three feet, whether it be pillars that protrude onto the driveway. There's one on Vacation Drive that's 11 feet from the curb, and it's an entire carport with a cover. And it comes out from the front entry, and it covers the garage as well. And I'm like, wow, how did they get away with that? They're hassling me over three feet. And then also, I'm not asking for anything that's not already been done, because like I said, if you drive all over, I've got several examples of, you know, other houses that protrude much farther than I do.
Bottom line is, the committee actually does not have the authority to approve something to be built in the front setback. That's our problem. We have to go by the CCNRs. And that's, we're bound by that.
I guess if that is the case, I'm just trying to figure out how the other people were approved.
We're not here to decipher what the other people are doing. We can tell you that you don't know what the circumstances are. We don't know if it was done. And there's so many different rules and regulations regarding pillars, regarding walls, regarding retaining walls. They're all different rules. So you might be looking at something thinking that it would be in the same vicinity, but it's not.
I'm gonna ask, are there any questions from the board? That you have? Bill?
Well, I was just going to, I'm not sure that you knew that it was just this, if you look at the other back screen here, it's just this support pillar. It's just a column right now. It has nothing attached to it. And like my cohort here was saying, it's not in the best condition right now for a new home. The... If he was, he mentioned that he wanted to, well, first off, he mentioned that someone at the staff, I think, when we talked to him prior, he said it was somebody at the city. So I think that's, I think it was a city employee that it talked to, and they don't have the CCNRs like we do. The gate would not be able to go in there also, what she was referring to, because it is in the front 20-foot setback. This is not, the courtyard is behind the wall of the garage. This, excuse me. This particular corner right here is exactly the right distance. It's 20 feet from the front setback, or front property line, excuse me. So it's still, if he still wants to put a cover on, which we don't have a plan for, but it could be attached to the to the side of the home in that particular position. But it and it could cantilever out two and a half feet for the cover, but we have no plan for that. So, and this is obviously a CCNR.
That's what I was describing on the face of it.
It hasn't been completed yet, because when they told me that it wasn't allowed, I stopped doing work on it. I still have my stucco guy coming over. Well, I was gonna have my stucco guy come over and finish it. In fact, he's gotta do most of the front, because he tried to do a smooth trial stucco, and he didn't put the mixture in right, didn't let it set up right, but it looks horrible. So now, the other houses I'm building in Canyon Lake, I've went away from that, and I'm using a different finish just to avoid that debacle that happened with his stucco finish. But, you know, it's a great plan. All my other houses, you know, since I found this out, have been designed and built within the front yard setback. This is just something, as far as I'm concerned, I was misinformed about. And that's the only reason it was designed and built the way it was. And that's why I left it a quarter inch away from the house, just to be safe. And here we are. I never thought it would be an issue or a problem. You know?
Any other board questions? All right. Thank you for coming in. I will, my only comment is, as you're building houses here, even if it was within the setback, or not in the setback, any type of change at all always has to go through ACC. If you decide to add a water fountain in front, ACC or anything, like I learned being on the board that, about the water fountain, I thought you could just do that, or a statue. I mean, absolutely everything has to go through ACC, including items in your backyard. So I've learned a lot about that, being on the board and attending just a couple of their meetings. So I just want you to know that, in the beginning, it's always better to go in and check with them. So with that, is there a motion? Can I have a motion?
I motioned up the ACC decision.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion by the board? All in favor of upholding ACC's decision, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
All in favor, one absent, motion carried.
I'll make one last comment, somewhat, since I'm on video before I adjourn. I'd like to thank everyone on the board, because apparently I completely forgot about you guys, which is awful. So to the, to you, Alex, since this will be officially on record. And you don't have to stick around for this. You don't have to, sorry, but you can anymore. But thank you so much for stepping up and stepping in. Like you said earlier, I barely knew you before, and you are absolutely a joy to work with. And I love the ideas that you bring to the board, and your energy, and your love for all your fellow members and staff. And I'm sure that they will want you someday to be mayor, and that may happen for Mayor Alex Cook. Since there's no one here, I'm just gonna mess around. I'll save the best for last, because that'll be you, my insurance buddy. To Tim who's not here, truly, your heart is in the right place, and you're, I always said that he had the heartstrings, and I always focused on numbers. So Tim has been an absolute delight to work with as well. And I didn't know him before coming onto the board, so a great pleasure meeting him. And then Bill, just thank you so much for your contributions and your passion to make Canyon Lake a safer place. Thank you for your executive expertise that you have brought in to various board meetings, and that's been incredibly helpful. So I look forward to seeing what you're gonna do to help keep our community safe. Thank you for that. And to my insurance buddy, thank you for diving in with everything. I appreciate greatly your thoughtful consideration and everything, and that you research before you make your decisions. And it wasn't until a couple months after the lodge patio renovation when I found out that you were asking around, and it was a realtor who said she would never show this area to a prospective client in Canyon Lake. And that was what made your decision a little bit easier. And now you're to be able to, she'll be able to show it off as a jewel. So each of you brought some unique characteristics, and I just want to thank you for that. So now I'll ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.